That their employees.
Yeah.
I think that anybody that gets paid a wage is an employee.
The IRS.
And that's fine if we do it. I'm just, to me, it's very important that we get these definitions clear.
Great.
So B talks of that. The home occupation is conducted entirely in the residential dwelling and is carried on in the dwelling only by members of the residing family.
Okay.
So if they do reside there, and if there's even six or eight of them, and they do get paid a wage, then those are employees. And the home occupation can have employees as long as they are family members residing on the property. And that's fine. I don't have the objection to that. I just think that we should be very specific about it. And, you know, commercial, we kind of have that already in our code. We're working towards that. And the other is self-employment. If we're, for the moment, the time being, we use that as a term. Okay? Are we looking at plumbers, electricians, and so forth? This has been mentioned. And are they going to be allowed to have employees? And if so, how many?
Because they could change that to a small business.
I think small business would more accurately depict it, Eric. I think, and then I think-
I got your answer.
And then I just wonder, how, you know, are we going to allow them to have 120 employees, or six employees, or?
There will be public hearings on all of that.
Okay.
That's what they're going to establish as that size, or small.
Clarify, because we had the public hearings for this whole code.
For the home occupation, we've kind of done the public hearings. On all these other two, I thought, we're back to public hearings and-
And I was exactly opposite. I figured that this is all under, we've got this specific code. Added these codes. Clarify, are we expecting to have more public hearings?
I didn't. I thought we got all the input that we have.
That's what we said last meeting. You guys said, "No, we'll have public hearings." We're killing it.
Well, okay, let's put it this way. There's public here, and we're having a public meeting.
Just not an official public hearing.
But we are not having, by code and by law, we have fulfilled that requirement of having a public hearing.
But there certainly will be room for input.
Tonight and every night until this is done.
At the moment, Mayor, how do we feel on employee size for small businesses?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, from my personal opinion?
Yeah.
I think a residential zone is a residential zone. I don't think commercial ought to be in the same-
I'm not referring commercial. I'm saying small business. You've got an electrician or a plumber. He's got three guys working for him. It's illegal.
Well, that's what we're going to end up discussing. That's why we're going to have the people in John and Fine-Tune Act, because that's where it's really going to come together. Well, it's going to go like this and come together, and, you know. But whether it's commercial or small business, there needs to be a little flexibility for all of it. But how big, that's the whole point.
Ambiguity is not our friend.
And how much-
Specifics.
I think you also have to look at how much property that they have, because if they can, if they're going to have those employees, I think they need to be able to park on their property.
Right.
Stay on the street that is residential.
I'd imagine we'd have another group meeting, Tom, with planning and town council and discuss. I thought that was a really good meeting.
I was just going to say, I was suggesting another work meeting, just like we had, because it was a good one.
And others were invited?
In general terms, just another question from the public. Does small business, in your minds, signify something larger than home occupation? Is home occupation kind of the smaller level, then small business, then commercial? Is that, is my understanding?
I see the home occupation as being, by quoting, you're sending quilts out of your place or something. You're sitting there as a family.
Hairdresser.
Hairdresser.
But even a one-man shop, electrician, he would not be considered home occupation. He'd be more in the small business.
Because he's going to need a place to store his stuff outside. He can't have any outside vehicles.
He's working outside of the home.
So it's requiring more than what the home occupation is often.
You're going to write new code for a new category of business. I think you need to have something in writing and then have a public hearing dealing with that code. It's new code. You can't, I don't think it falls into, we've already had the public hearings, because you don't have any wording on it yet.
I think she's right.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
The input may be the same as what you've already heard, but it's new code that requires a public hearing.
I think it's what we pulled out of the home occupation, that we said, "This is too much for home occupation."
Right.
So I will make a phone call to get clarification on if we do or don't. It'll be a quick phone call to council, and it won't cost us a lot of money, and he will be able to advise us if we do or don't. And if we do, we'll allow it.
What were you thinking, Eric?
What's that?
Were you thinking we needed one?
I didn't think we did, because we went to home occupation. We've come up with a new classification within that's home occupation that we think is more of an intense. I think this is all still within that same criteria.
It doesn't mean we're not wanting, you guys-
No, absolutely.
It's public every time.
That's the reason we came up with this, is because of public input.
Yeah.
Is we think, well, no, we do have a section out there that really doesn't cover here. And commercial, we're somewhere between. And so I think it's actually part of this home occupation, because it would just be the same on the business license. You know, you'd have your three different levels, three different impacts.
I will get a legal call on that to make sure that we do it right.
Okay. But I thought, Mayor, that we were going to accept or deny or vote on this tonight. Is that not right?
I was planning on that until I understood that if we did that, that we would have to go through the whole of public hearing for all three of them. But if we keep this open and just correct the words and then set it on the shelf, then we can work toward the other ones.
Because if, really, John, if small business doesn't, if we decide we don't want that, if we decide we don't want small business after all, then this has to change.
Yeah.
This won't be our final document.
I agree.
And so that's where I see the tie-in, is because if that goes away, and we only have to, we decide that we don't like the small, then we have to address that in the home occupation.
Eric's question. Small business, we're saying they can't use anything outdoor. I'm sorry, for home occupation, they're saying, but for small business, for people that are just a little bit larger, are we going to allow them to use their barn to store their pipes and their valves and so forth if they're a plumber?
We don't know. We haven't written anything.
Is that, I mean?
I think there were some genuine comments that talked about using an accessory structure
Right.
and having room to park their vehicles, what number that is. I think all that's open.
But for now, we're limiting home occupation to the very smallest indoor. Where this other, we're still leaving the door open for people to become legal who are already doing those kinds of things.
Correct.
John, I had that, so I stepped up back there. I had that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, you mentioned about the square footage on the signage.
Correct.
I've got an ordinance from 2008.
Is that 15?
That changed it from two feet, two square feet, to 10 square feet. And the sign-off sheet at the time of the council approving that, but all of the copies of the code that have been produced by members of the council and planning commissions still added as two feet. I think it's currently, it is 10 square feet.
I think that's too big.
10 square feet?
Yeah. By two?
Yeah. Well, we took the average real estate sign, size, and that's what it encompassed to fit in there. So we can, two square feet, I mean, that's-
That's really small.
That's really small.
Yeah, one by two.
Your mailbox.
Yeah, that's it.
Not even a shingle. About one, two square feet.
Yeah. And so I remember when we looked at that. But if you look at the red line, it does say 10 square feet in the red line.
In the beginning, when you saw a red line?
Yeah, on the very first red line.
That's because I pulled that off of the code that's online, that I updated to the current one off of this ordinance.
Yeah.
But when somebody has it, Gary has old copies. I don't know where John got his copy, but it still was a two.
Yeah.
I think the current code does say 10.
It does. Yeah, we changed that.
So I, in the copy that John-
So that's a change here?
Yes, that John produced, it still says two, and I think it should be 10.
Yeah, I have that red line in here.
Okay.
Since we're doing that right now, where's that?
F.
F?
F on page two.
Okay. Two.
As a matter of fact, in the red line, it actually gives a date when it was amended.
And that would be due next.
So where does it say 10 square feet?
An ordinance that was passed in 2008. Oh, I know, it does. And I'm saying that's an error. It should say 10.
It's a typo.
Okay, so you have a bunch of others, Eric?
What?
Or a couple of changes?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. I know everybody had different stuff. I have, do you just want to go through them?
Yeah.
Okay, I have, on the front page, number three. Home occupation shall not cause demand for town, for town or Daniel or utility service or community facilities in excess of those usually customarily provided for residential uses. I think we should put for in-residential uses.
Excess of those usually and customarily provided for in-residential uses?
Yes.
Provided for.
So you're taking on four?
No, I'm leaving four. I'm adding in after it. Provided for in-residential.
Tama.
Oh, I got it.
In-residential uses.
Okay.
Number five, site plan shall be provided to staff to determine the yard requirements and availability of parking space. We don't allow them to use any yard space, so.
So strike it?
We do have to assess availability of parking space, though, because they will have customers. I mean, we've used the hair shop. It's going to have people come.
Yeah, they've got to have, they've got to be available parking.
Yep. So they've got to have off-road parking.
Yeah, but I just saw yard requirement, but we're not allowing yard requirement.
So get rid of yard requirements, Eric?
That's what I was looking. I looked, I just had a question marked on number five. We're requiring something we don't allow.
So a site plan shall be provided to the planning staff to determine availability of parking space and service that deserves the proposed use ingress and egress?
Sounds great.
Strike yard requirements, correct?
Yes. And then 82506, the last, first sentence, right there, right at the end, it needs to be a capital T on top.
Help me, Eric.
Just 82506?
Yep.
First line, part of the end?
Oh, it is capitalized.
I don't have it capitalized here.
As you call, you're using the copy that you brought, not the one that you brought.
Yeah, that's correct. I only marked the one you guys sent me. That's it. I don't mark it at the meeting. I bring it marked.
It works.
Yes.
Turn to page, page number two. Home occupation may be permitted in the RA1, RA5, and P60 zones. I think that needs to just say that it is allowed in the zone. They have to show that it's allowed in that zone, because if we start getting zone changes, we'll have to come back and address it in this document.
Correct.
And if it's allowed in that zone, then it will say in that zone that home occupations are allowed. I don't think we should spell out exactly which zone. Because right now, those are the zones we allow, but that's not saying that next week we don't have a zone change.
Should we just get rid of that whole thing, then? Just the RA1 on?
Yeah, I would just put in the zone.
In the zone.
But what does that even tell somebody?
That any zoning in Daniels could be possibly-
But that's, we don't want to say that.
No, it's saying, before a home occupation license is issued, the following must be shown. A home occupation may be permitted in that zone.
Oh, okay. So in that zone, that makes sense. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So then we're not dealing with if we get more zone changes.
Yeah, that's smart.
And how that, how that will affect it. I've still hung up on the one commercial vehicle may be allowed.
What are you thinking?
I just don't see-
Why, that needs to be there?
Well, no, I'm thinking of one in particular. You invited here tonight to have one commercial vehicle.
So are you saying, make it more restrictive or less, or?
I don't know. I don't know. I guess it would be, what are you?
I guess what would the uses of a commercial vehicle be in a home occupation?
I would say, like, the one that comes to mind is flower delivery van.
Yeah, yeah.
Advertising, kind of.
Yeah.
Why does it say may? It's going to be shall. If it's going to have it, it should be shall. May is subjective.
That's kind of how, you can say either or, or we don't care.
Yeah, well, we don't like you, so no, you don't get it.
That's how we roll. Dig for yourself now, Casey.
I think that one commercial vehicle comes from the county code back in the day.
Yeah, it was carried over from that.
But we talked about it a lot last meeting. And this we've gone over in detail. What do you remember, Tom?
I had to leave it in early, John. I wasn't there.
Did we not get to this one?
I thought that we did talk about it, and I thought that it was kind of before we split paths with home occupation and what we're calling small business now. I think that there were a number of people that we've identified that are in Daniel doing business, and that they have more than one vehicle. Whether we're going to allow that in small business or home occupation, I don't know. It seems like if small, excuse me, if home occupation is more restrictive, I don't think it's really that unreasonable for one vehicle. On the other hand, maybe we don't want that.
But how do we determine if it's commercial or not? If they have a flower van, they might go to the grocery store in the same van.
Signage? Or size?
I don't know.
That's a good point. How are you?
So do you, is the issue commercial? You want to?
For me, when I read this, and knowing that we have a few more to deal with, I was fine with the one under this circumstances, because any other ones can move into those other categories.
I think that's true.
And so, that's-
One vehicle can have one vehicle.
But-
One business can have one vehicle.
Under this particular-
But Mayor, maybe the emphasis here is on commercial, okay? You have to have a commercial driver's license to drive a big truck. And maybe what we're saying here is, you may have one semi-truck if you have a home occupation. I don't know, is that, is that your point, Eric?
Well, my point is, if you're going to allow everybody residing in the family, there may be more than one commercial vehicle. There may be two delivery vans.
But then I think you're getting out of the home occupation.
Yeah.
Well, I'd only buy the vehicle. If you have a flower shop in your house, how are you?
Well, that's what we're dictating right here, saying, you know, how big are we going to allow this, you know, this type of business? And we're going to be limiting it to the bare bones, essential, in-house business. I think that you should limit them to one and keep this just as simple, plain, you know, business. If they want to branch and start bringing in our vehicles and expanding drone, they need to go to the bigger size.
No, it's a small business.
As long as we allow small business, that's a viable option, Casey.
It is.
If we're going to rule that out, and we're going to say, well, everything is going to be forced to this, or it's not going to exist.
I don't think, I don't think it'll ever, I mean, we can sit here and beat it over five years. We're ever dense that small business into a home occupation. It's just two different things.
No, that's the point.
What about the other planning members? What do you guys think?
I think it's okay to have one commercial vehicle. That doesn't seem unreasonable. A pickup truck with a sign on the side, that's a commercial vehicle, isn't it?
I know some people, I know some people that have licenses right now. It's just a sales vehicle that they just drive back and forth in. That's it. It's not even, it doesn't even have logos on it, but it is their commercial vehicle.
Well, Casey, when I first started in one of the businesses that I operated, we had magnetic signs, and it was not a commercial vehicle. It was my own private car. But it was a commercial vehicle when I got to the customers.
Yeah.
Magnetic signs are wonderful.
Well, that's my point. Exactly, it is if her car is leaving here. Are we only allowing one to have a sign on? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I mean-
I mean, that's a business write-off. If you can write off your two cars, why don't you want to do that?
We're just stating right here, for what we can control, we're stating one vehicle. If they have magnetic signs, they slap them on any vehicle they have, you know? As long as when they're parked out there, they don't have a fleet of them, so.
Well, they can have a fleet of them. They just have to pull the magnetic sign off.
Exactly. Then they become residential.
Yeah. I don't think it does them into small business.
Well, it starts getting multiples.
I think you could go as, a home occupation with two vehicles easily.
But that's just what you're saying. You could if you wanted to.
I see most of our small, home occupations, husband and wife ran operations. You see, Eber Taylor came in, they're doing the bags. They're both going to be driving a vehicle.
So why even have D?
Why even have what?
Why even have one commercial vehicle?
Because we didn't want to have-
We don't want to have five or six.
But wouldn't that get cut out by other things?
Once again, if we keep it one, we can address two or three or four and another one. I know Eric's view would be, he would like to see, most likely, two.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So that's, I mean, he's got a good point. Husband-wife operation, that would be.
So two semis, then, to any commercial vehicle?
That's the next question.
I think the G W. Right, I mean, it just, okay, so when someone takes-
That's a natural progression.
You'd have to put down, like, two passenger vehicles.
Because a semi is not a home occupation vehicle.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It doesn't-
So then we need to change the wording to not say "commercial," but say something more defined.
But I think as soon as you hang a sign on it, it's commercial.
Yeah, you're probably right.
But you can limit the size by the G W.
At least according to the highway patrol.
Well, and as soon as you, as soon as you tell your town you're using it as a tax ride off for your business, then it becomes commercial.
What if you limit it to two axles?
Business.
Because that will allow some size, but it won't allow a semi.
You could go to like a one-ton or a-
Well, one-ton is pretty small sometimes. If you've got a, you know, a lot of deliveries to do, you might have a ton and a half truck. And, you know, if you get a truck that you can do your deliveries with-
Yeah, home occupation, no-
But then that's not a home occupation. Now you're going to have a small business.
Yeah, it's a pretty small space that you're going to be making.
Something that a one-ton can't pull.
This is just a home.
Yeah, John's right.
It depends on how, what you're pulling, John.
Yeah, I understand, but a one-ton's a pretty big truck.
I had generators that weighed up to where one ton was really stretching.
But a generator's not a home occupation.
No, it is, actually.
It's a backup generator for his home occupation.
Absolutely.
I think we should stick with one.
I think you need to leave it at one commercial vehicle, at least, to be fair with, just to be fair with the people that have one, one commercial vehicle already, and they're living by that best avenue.
So this, this isn't to be for a guy that drives a semi for a living, right? He doesn't need a home occupation license.
You've got a trucking company. My uncle was a owner-operator, and all he ever had was one semi. And he parked that in a subdivision. I remember when I was a kid. He would park that down at the end of the street. All the, that was all he ever had, was one commercial vehicle. He was an owner-operator, but that was a big truck. Yeah, I mean, that's-
And I think that in Daniels, everybody has it appropriate. He had a vehicle that size off the street.
Yeah, I think that there's a bunch of those around.
And I think one person with a home-run business is, I mean, he's running his trucking business out of his home as a office, home office. But he's taking, conducting his business away from home, like everybody else is conducting their business. Either they come to them, or they're taking a product to somebody else. How can he bring that truck home and park it through the night or for the weekend?
I think he certainly should be able to, but wouldn't that still fall under small business, though, instead of home occupation?
It depends on who owns the business. I think that you have all these three categories. You're going to have to go and figure everything out.
Together.
Back and forth.
Because a guy with one piece of information-
I bring my truck and park it in my driveway.
And then small business, if you have-
Yeah, it's my two-driv, yeah, it's my favorite drive truck. It's controlled completely by the company I'm leased to. I'm not operating a business out of my place. I have a taxi right home.
Yeah, totally different animal.
Yeah. You know, once, once in a while, I bring my truck into the neighborhood, because I'm on my way somewhere. God bless, I can't spend the night at home one time.
What if I just, what if I just bought a dump?
I'm not in business.
And I just wanted a truck?
Not now, like, so.
It's not a business.
That's not a business.
If I have two, my son wants to drive.
Pimp it out? No business name on it?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Go ride it?
Not for hire.
Not for hire. Just love driving dump trucks. So I've got a question mark right now on the one commercial. Do we need to hold off, or can we come to consensus on number D, item D?
About part, part on the property. Part property boundaries or the pop on the street driveway.
You mean add that to item D, one vehicle may be allowed in-
Within the property boundaries.
Shall we?
I keep my mouth shut.
I got to get that on film. Wait the next meeting.
Only if we're going to dictate what type of vehicle.
Early, you have good insight.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's make one way or the other decision on number D, item D. So everyone out in the audience tonight is saying one vehicle. We've got three or two council member right now say that one vehicle would, under this circumstance, would be appropriate. And maybe, and that's where, well, people are looking at, they're maybe, not as tight in the next two versions.
If Mayor, if people that are doing this, and they do have two vehicles, if they have the option of moving up into small business, and they're willing to do that, I think that would be reasonable.
Or, what if we just put in here, or, if company's owned by, or if it's husband and wife, you can have two.
No, because you might have a father and a son deal.
Or-
Mom and daughter.
Politically correct.
Husband and husband, or wife and wife.
If we have two, as we change that to two vehicles parked on the home.
As long as they can get it under small business, if they move up, there's no problem.
Or two vehicles per family, wouldn't just-
Well, there is a problem to move up that I see coming pretty quick. And that is, you're going to be taxed as a business if you're packing a small business license. They don't care where your zone is. I think that, before we get this done, I bet we see that.
And let me add to that. So we had that discussion today. After we had that discussion today, an individual came in. The county has asked this individual directly through us, who lives in our town, for that exact purpose. His personal property, so not the land, but anything else that he may have. He doesn't have a business license, because he doesn't do business in the town, but he lives in the town. And he got a letter this week from the county, and that was his first thing to me before I even said a word, is, this is what they're going to be trying to do. And I said, yeah, they probably are. So the county, with Eric saying right now, is, you know, if they, if the county, in fact, tries to start imposing, if you have a business license, then you're going to pay all your visit property tax on top of everything else, then we as a board are going to have to look at it in a different direction, because-
Because your RA5 will no longer be taxed as RA5. You will be taxed as commercial.
Because that's the use, not the zoning.
Doesn't matter where your zone is. County's going to- This property you're looking at.
That's the county doing that.
Exactly. They came, they were that tax, and they held that up and said, "We are commercial." They are not commercial. They're RA5, but they are being billed as commercial at 100% value.
On the property tax?
Yeah. And I believe that there's a direct tie-in to why they request them are business licenses.
Yeah, sure.
But do you have to give them to them?
We don't have to issue a business license. As a town, we don't have to issue.
But do you have to give them the list?
By state law, we'll have to provide that.
To the county.
To the county. If we issue a business license, we'll have to issue that by state law.
Well?
So it's just another twist.
That would have to be something that a person has to decide.
Yeah, that's-
If they know that going into it, that, well, unless this is a small business, I'm going to be paying commercial real estate property taxes, they're going to have to make that decision. That's not for us.
Well, what's going to happen, it's going to, you know, if they have it now, and they do do that, that's out of our control on that side of it, but then, you're right, it'll, I mean, the people are either going to have to adjust themselves and go with it, or back out.
Hey, Jim, so wouldn't they, so if they're going to tax them on that, the whole property is commercial?
Well, their equipment and their business, and, yeah, everything that they claim is their business, so whether it's their trucks or computers and tables.
But not the land itself.
But that's personal property, not personal land as well.
That's what I'm saying. As soon as they do that, aren't they opening themselves up to a whole can of worms, saying that, okay, it's RA5 now, and now you're taxing it as commercial? Shouldn't they rezone it as commercial?
That's exactly the property that these folks are looking at. That's exactly what they did. They brought that tax to me and said, "We are commercial. We're being taxed there."
Yeah.
Yet it's an RA5 zone. The county doesn't care. I went to the county and went, "What are you doing? This is an RA5 zone. You guys are mixed up."
You're talking to this specific property out of the quantity?
Yep. Yep. And so the county says, no, we tax on the use, not the zoning. We don't care what.
But I mean, technically, legally, I'm just saying.
I think that'd be a tough.
Aren't they, aren't they kind of overstepping that now, saying that, okay, if you're, if you're taxing this, I paid it. You're saying that my zoning is commercial.
Eric, when I had a home occupation license in Bountiful, that never happened. Nobody ever came out and tried to register our property as commercial for taxes. We did have to pay, we had to pay the taxes on inventory. We did have to pay the taxes on all of the business assets, the, the personal property, but not the real estate.
I could tell you it's happening here.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
But does that leave a home occupation open as well?
Well, it does.
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on the classification we put on that thing. If we don't issue a license for home occupation, but we issue a permit, then the wording's different. We may not be obligated to give that to the county.
I guess what I'm thinking, we buy this property, we have our physical buildings there. I want my office at home where it's convenient. Now I have a home occupation as well as a commercial, and I'm going to be taxed on that. That would be.
So we're going to get our, yeah, we own five acre piece of property, and we're running our business out of our home, and they're going to say, well, you got this property over here. Plus, you're going to end up paying commercial property taxes on 10 acres.
I know, that's where I'm just saying, I think we should stick to the property on, because I think some people that, if you get licensing, that would want the property to go to commercial, that if they resell it, you know, they can make more money out of it.
I don't, I don't think you can avoid it. I don't think there's any way to avoid this. I think that if they decide to do it, they'll do it.
I know, but I think if they will, but I don't think they're thinking of the repercussions that could possibly come from this. Like that law that we re, we rezoned as R A five again after we made it, you know, commercial. If that went and went through, it was commercial and they didn't build on it, we couldn't, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that the county could make, it's very sticky for us. In, in that field, I just don't think that that's right.
But a home office?
It's not right, but they're more glad to let you take the bullet beforehand.
Yeah.
But there's five guys on that count. Is it seven or five?
Seven.
Seven. We got seven out there. Just got to get them out, rewrite this.
Okay, I can tell you how easy that is. I tried that.
What, what about home office? You've got a business at one o, Jason, and you're using part of your house or a room as an office.
That's what we have to address.
In, in your opinion, is that this year?
As I read the tax notice in the wave, I believe that that's an item this year.
Okay, so that, that tax notice.
Did anybody else read those notices in the wave? Public hearing coming up. Big square bombs to them.
Going to be for County Rec and for County General Fund.
Well, I have a question. So on this licensing, or this home occupation or whatever, I want to know what you would fall under being the planner of Daniels, because you have an office in the town. So would you have to have a license, I mean, you know, to run your planning department out of your office?
You'd have to ask the mayor.
No, no, because it's what's good for, I mean, it's for everyone. It's not for who we choose. It's for everyone. So is that correct?
My understanding, or my, the way I would understand it is everything, everyone has an office to do their own personal stuff in their house. It may not be for business, but it's an office that they do whatever, whether bills or what's on. I, I don't think that's even remotely close to what we're talking about or involved in any of this, but that's a personal office that's not doing business.
But there is offices that are doing business.
Sure, sure.
And so what's the difference between how are they not the same as a small business? Because they are doing, just like she said, she has an office at her house, that's where she does her book working, for the company. Legally, every paperwork I bet goes to their house. So how is that not considered business at their house then, if you want to be technical business?
You only have to have one business license though. So that's the same business that you would have at their other, in other words, I don't have to have a business license in Sandy. I don't have to have a business, I have a business license in Daniel. I can work anywhere in the state of Utah. So, and I don't have to have one for every location that I do work. And I think that would fall under that. You would only need one and you could pick whichever, I mean, you'd probably want to do the commercial property.
So Chip, is your house the main hub and then Eric's working at his house and he's got a secondary?
Illegally.
Well, Lynn's is in there somewhere.
So I, I don't know if the home, uh, uh, office, I mean, it's not an office or whatnot, but.
Well, it's exempt from this because it's a municipality anyhow.
So are we still on D then?
Thank you, thank you, Casey. Cockling worded to two then and keep it so it doesn't go to three or keep it at one that, and then move to any other vehicles that are next.
The easiest way is that you put a two where the one is.
I like that.
How about you?
And then change it to shall, and then we're done. Change the may to shall.
Two shall be.
And then that, I mean, that.
And is that going to, so, and so is that going to allow two semis, two dump trucks, two whatever, as long as there are family members?
Property, within the property.
It does technically, but then you have to have all the other little things up here that could possibly weed them out.
Really? Pretty tight.
The home occupation is conducted entirely within the residential dwelling and carried on with dwelling only by members of the society and family.
Why would you need a semi for that?
Oh, I don't know that you would need one, but it doesn't rule them out.
It doesn't rule them out.
Because in case he wanted to drive one.
In case I liked it.
I like it.
I'll tell you who's got, I know, I know, unique circumstance, who's the gentleman that had that beautiful semi that he just drove around?
Oh, yeah. That Land.
Land.
Yeah.
With his trailer and, I mean, that's, that wasn't a business. He's got a semi, it's a beautiful truck that he made, and I, once again, that wouldn't fall in, but it is a commercial vehicle.
That vehicle, particular vehicle, is considered an R V.
There you go.
It totes his, to pitbulls, it's R V.
And it is.
And it's in St. George all the time.
No, no, I, I, I'm trying to think, seeing that that wouldn't apply, but some people might say that would have applied.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Land.
Land.
What you're asking is what's the difference?
Well, so in May, and I, you know, I see a difference, but that doesn't mean everybody else sees a difference in that kind of.
Would a semi change the character of the building? I think it would, but I think.
Two commercial vehicles shall be allowed within the property.
I'm just saying, but, I mean.
Parked within the property.
So what was that, John? What did you add?
I, I said, would two semis change the character of the building and dwelling?
Yeah.
Have two of them parked there, wouldn't that change the, you know.
Not as bad as a limo. It depends on the property. That might improve the look.
But I'm just saying, I think that possibly, you know, either A through I, you can kind of like thin out possibly what it is.
Or, yeah.
Number E.
Oh, you're trying to make it go to two. Trying to add that.
Well, you just wrote two and put shall.
Yeah. Within the property, parked within the property.
So then that could thin it down to by acreage, if they don't have enough acres to store the commercial trucks on, or the bigger trucks that you're talking about.
Parked within the property?
Yeah, within the property, not on the road.
As opposed to being parked on the street?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know. That starts to get weird.
I think, I think so too, John. I think we're going to allow it in a small business. Let's just move them up into small.
Yeah.
Well, and that goes into the small business.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So what do you think, Tom? Do you like it the way it is?
I do. If, if I had any question at all, it would be commercial vehicle. Sooner or later, somebody's going to come in here and want a giant semi with a big banner on it, because we're not allowing it more than 10 feet of signage. And, and trust me, I've seen lots of places where those semis with the signs are parked there and never turn away.
That's all, that's all they're for, yeah.
I, I would.
Anyone have been out to Fruitland?
Could you put in two passenger style, passenger commercial vehicles?
How do you leave it at one commercial vehicle?
And put shall in there.
I would agree with that.
Put shall in there.
Yeah.
What about one residential vehicle used for commercial purposes?
We're getting down to one commercial vehicle, shall be allowed?
Well, I mean, that's.
I'm wondering if we just don't lose the whole, all of D.
I've thought that too.
Lose the whole thing?
Then if people complain, we'll deal with it.
Well, it goes back to where, should not alter the residential character of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, and the size of the vehicle is not really any more business, because I could go buy a 35-foot mower home and park it next to my house, and I might be well within my rights as a resident.
There's a simple thought, if you just strike it, because if you can control it.
Let's strike it. I agree.
Are you just going away?
Going away.
Well, we got 30.
Okay, so we're striking D.
So E becomes D.
Good long discussion to do that?
So my next item is the new D, which is a, home occupation is clearly incidental and secondary to the use.
Can I, can I, go back to this one commercial vehicle? What's going to do with somebody like Tom Eagles to bring his truck home? He's not a home occupation, but are you going to allow him to park his truck at home still?
My vote would be yes.
Yeah, what about me?
No, you're out.
Bring it to my truck home.
But you got to drive something home.
I say if you commit it on your property, I think you'd be well within your right.
You got to drive something home.
I think, I think.
There's people out there that bring their, their work truck to home.
Yeah. Well, and there's stuff, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, some people are required to, if they're on call or in service.
Chip, do you drive your truck home? Oh, twice a month?
There wouldn't be an apply.
My brother-in-law, he has a concrete lifting company, and his C C and R's and his neighbor don't allow him to bring home his trailer and truck. Cannot have any commercial vehicles in there. So he did the whole magnetic science thing, pops them off, so it's just a regular 5,500 flatbed truck when it's there, slaps them on when he leaves.
There's the size again.
But he can't have a trailer there. I mean, even an enclosed trailer, that's a commercial there on his property, but that's in the C C and R's.
So E?
Well, we don't have that.
Eric, what did you have on E?
E became D.
Is that all you wanted?
No, I wanted, well, I just, I just don't see the, any word that it's doing. When you, once you scratch this out of here, you're not leaving anything in your Daniel, um, to allow someone like Tom Eagles to bring his truck home. It's not written in there. Somebody could say, I don't recall that conversation, and it's, he's not going to go to bring his truck home all of a sudden.
He is not a home occupation though. He works for someone and that's the vehicle that he can drive, same as my husband.
We would ask.
So he has no home occupation license. This doesn't apply to him.
Yeah.
But are you still going to allow him to bring home, it sounds like?
Sure.
And you can put that into your, into your, like Kever City doesn't allow commercial vehicles in, in parking on the street or in the property boundaries.
Well, that's where we got to stick here.
Needs to be probably added into your, your zoning, your allowances for someone to be able to bring their commercial vehicle home and park.
And R A five.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
That would be in, in the zoning rather than.
Correct.
If you're striking it from here.
I know that we kind of debated.
It probably is still in there technically.
Well, and I.
It's allowed in an R A five already.
Yeah.
What if we changed it from commercial to say one company vehicle may be allowed?
It'd be the same as.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, because commercial in, in the.
Well, I would.
The driver's handbook has a definite meaning. Commercial vehicle is different than a company vehicle.
What about not expressly said, so that means the door's wide open? I mean, you brought up someone, how, another way we can control it, because it alters the characteristics of the, the R. But, or it would become a nuisance.
Any one of these, yeah, the nuisance is, is the criteria that they'll go after any of. Any of the trucks that come home and park, we're talking about diesel trucks, you get a neighbor complaining of dust, noise, smoke, and odor, those are all, that all falls under that. What if?
I think if you go back to your R A five word zoning, it does say it allows one commercial vehicle on the property.
Well, I was going to say in resident, or in the.
So you'd still be all right as a, as a, as an employer, or is it, yeah, bring in somebody else's vehicle home.
And I don't think our intent was to ever not let someone that works for whatever company, the, the company provides them a car and a phone and stuff that they can't.
Use that.
I'm past that now, probably.
Chip, there was one more idea on that, that if they have the business.
Talking about D.
The, the business, before they get their license, they're supposed to come before the board and kind of tell us what they're doing and that. If we enforce that, you can say at that time, um, they can let us know with the council at that time, what type of vehicles they had, and you can say yea or nay to what they had, what they're bringing home. You can put in there the wording like, to be determined.
Oh.
By the council.
There's a lawsuit.
There's a lawsuit.
If we like you, you're fine.
I just tried, let's go on.
All right.
Why don't we change the whole code to just that? Do you have a, did you ever make the whole code?
Awesome.
All right. If the council can feel they can mitigate D through other means throughout this particular code, I, I'm fine with striking it.
Yeah, let's strike it.
I agree.
At this point, it's stricken, because then, okay, and Eric, you went on to E, the new D.
The new D, home occupation is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for dwelling purposes. I think we need to change the first dwelling to residence, is secondary to the use of the residence for dwelling purposes.
Okay. How about the home occupation is clearly incidental and secondary, comma, and does not change. Get rid of all the purposes and dwellings and everything. I like the specificness of that. I, that's fairly clear. The more vague you get it, the more open you're going to have people trying to. So what do we have then? The home occupation is clearly incidental.
Incidental and secondary.
And secondary to the use of the residence.
No, it should be the other way, the dwelling for residential purposes.
The residence for dwelling purposes and does not change the character of the building from that of dwelling. Dwelling before residence or residence before dwelling for me works either way. Home occupation is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the residence for dwelling purposes and does not change. Yeah, that's okay. I like that. So all we did was change the first dwelling to residence, right?
Yeah. Behind the last dwelling for purposes, is that still?
Yes. For dwelling purposes and does not change the character of the building from that of dwelling.
Okay. After you change it to 10 square feet?
That's it.
That's good.
Okay, so you want me to make those changes and email them to you, Lynn?
I can get it.
You made those, sure. You, can I send you a copy that you can edit?
Okay.
Great.
Now we just put that neatly up on the shelf and nobody can find it.
I have a, a question about the small business and commercial. Are you, are you thinking adding more commercial zoning to, I guess, the state enforcement?
Well, it's a request-driven thing, an application-driven, right? So I don't, I don't know that we're looking to go ask people if we can change the commercial, but it's something.
But it's something. Well, I'm not saying we're going to want, but.
Yeah. It's a request or an application-driven process.
Application-driven process.
I mean, that could change if, if the general plan identified an area that they wanted to industrial park in or something like that. It would, the council would move in a direction to change only in that area to accommodate. It's like, it's, I hate to use it, but it's the S O B ordinance that we have, sexually oriented businesses. We have a section that, that's where they're zoned for. And so we have that area, and I'm sure the people don't want to be zoned that, but that's where it's at. It's over by the area. So sometimes a municipality will indicate an area for its own. Like Kever City, you've watched them this year continually go out on the blocks, commercial, now they're two blocks away from Main Street. All that's been changed commercial. That probably was not an application-driven process. So they, they will change that. They saw their need and they just made their call.
You, you're publishing four, this is all done, six, eight notes down the road. You hope?
Hope not.
See it's quicker than that.
As far as code?
As far as.
Especially the two codes.
We're just thinking how long.
I would hope.
Long you're going to keep coming.
Till it's done.
Right on. I like the air. So we are too.
The thing I see though, Mark, is we don't even have draft to go on. Here we had a draft to go on, and it took us six months plus. We've, we've got kind of a plan, but we don't even have draft. So I'm, I'm thinking it, I'd like to move along like the mayor, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, I hope. Eric, wouldn't I start looking at your meeting schedules between the planning department and the town council? Do you guys actually meet together and talk about these codes, to where I would be available, come to them meetings? Are them open meetings, or?
Yes.
So I've been missing out on these planning commission meetings, that I probably should have been coming to, no ask.
What typically happens is, we will look at something and either send it to planning, or just by the process, it goes to planning and they make a recommendation to us. So we've only had a few work meetings, most of the time it's always separate meetings, and they do theirs on Wednesday, and we do ours, and then we get the recommendations, and that's typically how it works. There's a big issue, and that's why we combined meetings, and we're probably gonna have another combined meeting on these next issues, so I would go to both, if you're really interested in that.
But they'll be announced, any combined meeting will be announced.
So if we do want to move to change from continued use to commercial, would we meet here or to the planning commission?
You'd fill out the application, I believe, and then go through the application process, which would go to planning.
Go here, and then you want it, okay.
Yep, yeah, it goes to planning first, they make the recommendation to the council.
All the meetings and the agendas are on the website, I think you've mentioned, yeah, look at that, so you can see.
Does the planning meet here as well, same room?
Hour later, we meet at seven. But we stay an hour later, so it kind of makes up for it.
How many people fall asleep?
Okay, we've got through the code, number seven, proposed language for home occupation, we got that, so number nine. Approval of council meeting, excuse me, council meeting and planning commission meeting and public hearing minutes of October 3, 2016.
There's an opening, somebody wants to talk, so...
Wait, wait a minute, I, are we to approve this application for home occupation business licenses?
Well, since you're putting off a new code for home occupation, we're just gonna use the same application. So I've asked the planning commissioners to stay here, that we're just about to lock out the door, because they should approve the October minutes as well. They were sent copies, if they have any corrections.
For the what, October 3?
Yes.
Do you like them?
The chair will now attend a motion as far as the November 7 combined meetings. Someone's had a chance to read them, or...
So the piece came up last time on, council gave Mr. Norris on item number seven.
Hold on, Eric, we're pacing.
Ten.
That paragraph was changed, Eric. I listened to the minutes again, to the reporting again.
Change me the clean copy, my marked up copy's over here.
Thanks, Eric, very sacrificial.
Okay, so item number two. Third sentence down. Travis, who has a conditional use for his trucking operation.
Are you, are we, item number two online is Jared Raby.
Is what?
Jared Raby, chief deputy.
Oh, yeah, this is the seventh, I'm on the wrong set.
No wonder.
Picked up the wrong one.
So I don't, I have marked 11, page 11.
Thank you, good seeing you guys.
This will have to do with the newly created lot, the water meter funding on Smith's lot line adjustment. A new meter will be installed on the newly created lot. I don't think we, we don't have a newly created lot.
No, it'd be on the, modify it on the...
Modified existing lot?
Yeah.
That would be the right terminology, right, modified existing lot? Probably what it meant.
It's so much clearer.
Well, at least it's a new.
Well, I, I could see somebody picking that up, saying, look, you guys created a lot right 30 minutes.
The other one is, should you just say the lot, which would be ambiguous enough, because it meant anything?
Yes.
Installed on the lot, installed on what? Well, so what, what do you want it to say?
A new meter will be installed on the, what did you say, Ryan?
The lot.
On the lot?
It could mean whatever we needed to mean.
Modified existing, just the existing lot.
It can't say newly created.
So it exists? The existing lot? Cross out newly created, it's existing?
That'll work. At least I don't think we created a lot there, yet. That's it for the third? For me, I don't know what he bails from.
Anything else, council members? We have a motion to accept the minutes with the change noted on page 11. We have a second. We have a first and a second, so we have any last discussions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye? Okay, approved, excuse me. Do we have a unanimous vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Be careful.
Okay, I'm 10, approval of council meeting minutes for November 7, 2016.
Okay, so now we're on item number two. Third sentence down, who has a conditional use for his trucking operation, is making correct. It's not a conditional use, it's a continued use. If you want to just change that to continued?
Okay.
And then if you'll drop down two lines, council member bunker stated that conditional use, just about a conditional use.
Okay.
Now we'll correct that sentence.
And one more on that, Lynn, I'm not sure I suggested applying, I maybe mentioned that it could be applied.
Where, are you still in the same paragraph?
Yeah.
Is that what you aren't swaying us?
No, I, yeah, I don't. I don't want, I didn't want to come across, or I didn't intend to sway them, or...
Sure. Mentioned applying?
Yeah, something like that.